Good evening. I call to the April Meeting of the Foreign City Planning Commission. We have a couple of guests out there this evening. I want to welcome you all. Thank you for being here. On behalf of the commissioners and... On behalf of the commissioners and the planning staff, again, we thank you for being here. I, as Chair, will be recusing myself on the sketch plan approval, and our Vice Chair, Mr. Howard, will proceed with that particular item on the agenda. Our first order of business is our invocation, and I ask Mr. Moses if he would to kindly accommodate.
Listen, pray. Good Lord, we want to thank you one time for gathering us together to do the business for the city of Florence. Lord, let us pray for one another, because we don't know when it'll be our last time. These are the blessings, and that's in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. All right. Approval of last month's minutes. The commissioners have received their packets. They've had a chance to review the minutes. Thank you. If there are no changes or suggestions for approving those, I will call for a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs nay, and ayes have it. All right. TC 2023-10, I will pass along over to our Vice Chairman.
All right. So, substitute teachers here, Jim. He's never taught with a teacher in present, so this is new. The first item is PC 2023-10, request for sketch plan review of the Gateway of Florence Development, specifically identified as Florence County Tax MAC number 00122-01-054. Turn it over to staff.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, so this is Gateway of Florence. This is a proposed development off of Harmony Street. It's 24 acres. To the north is the Florence Tennis Center. To the west is New Core, and to the south are single-family and duplex homes. It is zoned RG3, general residential. And future land use, neighborhood conservation, and also kind of picked up parks and open space from the tennis center parcel to the north. So, the sketch plan that you have in front of you is the latest trades. They are proposing 70 multifamily units in three buildings, and they're also proposing 12 single-family detached homes. For the RG3, multifamily is permitted if they meet certain conditions. And at the bottom, under site information, the developer has gone over those conditions required and what they're actually proposing. So, in the RG3, to have multifamily, you need 60% open space in the whole development, which is provided. About 40% of the developed area must be single-family homes, which is provided. And then, the multifamily needs to be separated from any residential use by a Type C buffer yard, which is now shown on the sketch plan. It does have city water and sewer. It does follow under our stormwater jurisdiction. And the development plan will have to be approved by staff before construction, and a traffic study will take place at that time of development plan. And that does conclude staff's report.
Okay. Thank you. As has already been pointed out, this is a sketch plan review, therefore, there is no public hearing. I will, though, ask the commissioners if there's any questions of staff.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Siri's got a mind of her own.
Let me get this straight. On the 70 multifamily units, that's indicated by, is that building 1, 2, and 3?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Those would be in there, and then the open space is indicated by... Indicated in there. And then, down at the bottom here, is that the single-family homes?
That's correct. Yes, sir. 12 different parcels, and the multifamily will be located on that just larger parcel. So, right now, they're proposing to break it up into 13 separate parcels, and the larger parcel containing the open space and the multifamily.
Which we can build first, the single-family units?
A representative of the developer is here, if you want to ask him any questions about it.
Can we have him come forward? It's not a public hearing, but I don't want...
I think if there are any specific questions, you can certainly ask him. It is, from my understanding, the first phase of this development will be the multifamily portion, and then, following that, they would do the single-family or sell lots for single-family development.
Where is the multifamily going again? I'm sorry.
So, the multifamily is located here central on the property. This is the buildings 1, 2, and 3.
And those will be built all at one time?
That's right.
When is the single-family's going to be built?
The single-family, they would subdivide that, and then, they are not single-family developers, I would imagine, at the time that they subdivide that or choose they can sell those lots for development.
How's this different from when it came to ours before?
So, previously, the applicant, or the previous applicant that was looking at this property was requesting a rezoning. They were looking for a much higher intensity use of the multifamily. I think they were looking at 180 units. With our current, with our zoning ordinance, by setting aside a certain amount of open space, which would be preserving all this wooded area, it permits a certain amount of multifamily. But it also requires a certain amount of the single-family as well.
Is there a timeframe of when the single-family's must be built?
No, but it would only, it locks that property in essentially that only single-family development can occur on those properties after that multifamily's built.
No more additional multifamilies could go on.
This plan that has been provided would be fully utilizing that property. No additional development could occur on that property.
And the single-family houses couldn't change?
They could certainly change. I think it would be... Early on, there was a first iteration of what the single-family would look like. City staff, in working with the developer, recommended what you currently have laid out just to make sure that it is cohesive with the existing structure of all the properties around it. So, you know, in that area, it's a very traditional layout, as far as, you know, 60-foot wide lots, 100-foot deep, fronting the road. So, we felt in, to be matching with the existing properties around it and going with the neighborhood conservation layout, this would be the most appropriate layout for the solided property.
So, the complaints we heard from the previous meeting, previous developer, whatever, all those folks that came and spoke against what they were doing, how did they feel about this, that they might...
Because this is not requiring to have a public hearing, we sent out letters to the adjacent property owners to notify them that this was occurring. I believe some of...
We did receive one phone call, and they understood that it was for sketch plan, and it wasn't compliance, and they were not requesting a rezoning. So, they seem to be accepting of the project.
Any other questions?
So, let me ask one more question. So, let me understand this. So, the line, these houses that are to the right, I don't know if you can pull that. Like, those are the people, those are some of the people where that line is, those are the adjacent land, or property owners, those are the ones that would have been contacted, those to the right there, all alone there, like Carver Place Annex. I can't read this thing. It's kind of small. But those would have been some of the...
Yeah, we sent out letters.
Those would have been some of the people you're talking about. And then, with the sketch plan, all of these open spaces that you have in here, that's pretty much what it should maintain?
Yes. Should the developer move forward with the project, that is what, essentially, what you have. If they proceed with, if three multifamily buildings get constructed, that would be the limitations of that property. So, no other multifamily could be just constructed on the site. Only the single-family could be constructed.
All right. Thank you.
So, in other words, it's just the same thing, but you've called a different thing?
Well, it meets our code. So, the rezoning request would have, no single-family would have been required with the previous rezoning, and only a much higher intensity use with the multifamily would have been allowed. Under this, it's, this is what it's, they are meeting the current zoning guidelines of what it's currently zoned, and have much, in order for them to do that, do what they are proposing, they have much stringent requirements as far as open spaces set aside, the requirement for single-family development.
What was it zoned the last time?
I can't remember what they requested. Oh, in the old code, in our previous code, it was zoned multifamily. So, this is, its current zoning is more restrictive than what it was previously zoned under our old code ordinances.
So, when they was in here the last time with this, it was zoned multifamily at that time?
No, no. They were requesting a, I can't remember what their zoning change, it was... They were requesting a zoning change.
Okay. And was that, was it zoned like it is now before they was...
Yes.
It was just like this beforehand?
That's right. They were not willing to work within the existing zoning regulation.
This is a new developer?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's right.
Of course. I notice you say they're going to start with the mother, building the duplex first. Then you say somebody else could be building the single-family homes, or the same people?
I do not know. I would anticipate that they would sell those lots for construction, for some, with a contractor to build new single-family homes on.
But it's not a sure thing after they get through with the duplexes. No one can guarantee that they're going to start the single-family home, because you just say they're going to be setting the laws.
Well, they will be required, once the multifamily is constructed, only single-family can be built.
So, this meets our current law, current regulations, everything?
Yes.
Any other?
What type of structures are you going to put up there? What are they going to look like?
I do not know.
You say the developers here, can I ask you anything?
I would, yeah.
Sure. Why don't you stand and come introduce yourself, stand here at the podium, if you would. And if the commissioners have questions, I can ask you directly.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, please.
So, good evening. My name is Josh Mandel. I'm with Gateway Development Corporation. I'm from Alvin, from Florence, Alvin, and actually, our company's based out in Birmingham. We have kind of two sister offices. And first of all, appreciate y'all giving us a chance to come forward tonight. Here are our application. I can answer any questions y'all have. You know, just listening and picking up a little bit on some of the questions and maybe some of the comments. As staff mentioned, and they've been very helpful to us in kind of helping us stay between the lines of what is currently proposed, it's our understanding that the 70 units we're proposing is certainly within the current guidelines and probably less than half of what was proposed by the developer in front of us. So, this is 70 units. We've been doing this for about 40 years. I've been doing this for about 20-something years myself. And this is all we do. Usually, as y'all are probably familiar, with multifamily developers versus single-family developers, they don't tend to be both. They tend to do one or the other. And I can commit to you right now, we, while we're not single-family developers, and I couldn't look at you and say, "We're going to plan to build single-family lots," that just wouldn't be honest. But that's not what we do, and I can commit to you however you'd like to see it, that we do not plan to build more than 70 multifamily units here ever. Like, that's, this parcel of land is meant for 70 multifamily units, and that's all we ever plan to do. Whatever you'd like to see me do, commit to that, I'm happy to do that.
I think this probably commits you to that, this plan. So, Mr. Moses, you had a question?
Yeah. What are the units going to look like?
So, typically, what we do, and I can send you samples of what we have done the last several years, or the last, you know, however many years. But these will be three-story suburban style. Average square foot of the unit's about 1,010 square foot. So, these are pretty decent-sized units. And they'll have a mix of hardy and brick on the exterior, pitched roofs. Of course, we'll have to meet the height maximum that comes with the code. We'll have a nice clubhouse. We'll have good amenities in that clubhouse, and I'm glad to offer references to.
Okay. How about affordable living, do you compare?
This will all be, this will all be affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
Yes, sir. Just like I said, just for what it's worth. Our rents that we're forecasting, most of our, for the most part, our rents will be in the, you know, $700, $800 range. For one bed, in $700 range, $850 in the two-bed, and then, three, in the 900s. And that's assuming what the market takes, but we're going to, this will be affordable housing.
So, you will build, how many units? How many, how many, 70?
70.
And then, they will never, never be able to buy?
On, of these, of these...
Yes.
I mean...
Went to them?
No, I mean, this is, I mean, you know, what happens 15-plus years down the road? I couldn't say, but no, this is going to be, this is going to be rental housing.
Any other questions?
And how many units did you propose before?
We've never, this is our first...
It's a different developer, before this happens. This is a new developer.
We would not have done something of that density. We, last thing we want to do, we want to come in and put a good foot forward. We got a reputation we're trying to uphold. Last thing we want to do is come in and stir up a lot of things by having that kind of density.
So, you're a new company. Okay.
Anything else of Mr. Mandel? Any other questions?
Let me get this straight, sir. As far as this proposal, or this sketch, with the 12 to 13 single-family, you're saying that that's a part of the proposal, but you wouldn't necessarily be building those? Not necessarily?
No, sir. I'm not going to tell you. I mean, we could partner something, bring someone in, but that's not what we do.
Right. But that's just a part of the proposal, that we would look forward to seeing these single-family homes in this proposal.
So, like I said, what I understand, the code requirements to require of us is to set the lots aside the way that conforms with the city codes.
Right.
And then, you know, then our first, our first objective will be to complete, develop and complete the multifamily portion and have the open space like it is. And then, we cross that bridge, and if there's a good, single-family local developer that would like to take this down, if there's some, you know, we're going to set that aside, but like I said, single, multi don't tend to, companies don't tend to do both, and if there's a good, single-family developer or contractor wants to come along and do this, or people want to do it themselves, we'll do, you know, we'll do whatever makes the most sense. We're just making sure we set aside what needs to be set aside.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Interest is going to be on Harmony Street?
Yes, sir.
That's the only interest that's going to go up here, is that? Nothing coming off Adderstone, not going to be cash flow? It's just going to be Harmony Street, that's it?
Yes, sir.
So, it's going to be day in, back up in the woods, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
How about the, one time we was talking about the water back there? The years where you came up and planned like this?
It's that, you know, like stormwater. So, that's something that, you know, again, it's something we have to address. And what we discussed is, for a sketch plan, all we're asking for is approval to basically lay the site plan out like we have it here.
Oh, they do come back to this?
But we'll come back through.
Okay, okay. Sketching up.
Okay.
The main thing that triggers this, coming before planning commission, is the number of lots that will be subdivided. Because it is greater than four lots being, that's being created, that's what requires the sketch plan approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mandel.
Thank you.
I guess to summarize, this is a new developer. This is a, this is not a request for a zoning change. This is a less dense proposal than previous, and there are no exceptions to guidelines policy. Is that fair? Kind of. All right. I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I want to say that, you know, I'm a big believer in land rights. When they tried to change the zoning before, I was against it, just because everybody around it was against it. Just like off Cherokee Road, they didn't want us to do that, affordable housing. They met the regs. All right, they met the regulations, and they own the land, so that's my only discussion I'll say.
Yeah, no, couldn't agree more. Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Sketch plan approved. Real teacher can come back. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Great job. I think I can learn from you, not you from me. The next item is PC 2023-13. This is, it does involve a public hearing, which we'll kind of lay out the guidelines for that, but right now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lane with staff. Good evening.
Good evening. This is a simple one. This is a request to annex and zone NC 10, a parcel located at 136 Wilson Road. And this is located up on Wilson, just off of North Irby Street, in a residential area. It's one of those donut holes in the county, and surrounded by city property. And here's a close-up of it, and it's in keeping with the rest of the area around it. Everything around it is zoned NC 10, so that's the appropriate zoning designation for it as well. And the parcel does meet the size and area description for the NC 10. And it does, is in keeping with the future land use recommendation of neighborhood conservation as well. Here's a picture of the house in the neighborhood, and there's no, nothing for extending to water and sewer. It's already present. So, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Any questions of staff from the commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second. Well, we got to have a, we got to have a public hearing.
Trying to make up time.
I thought I had a lapse there. I thought I said, "What in the world?" All right. If there are no questions from the commissioners of staff, I will open the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone that has interest in discussing in favor or against this request? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Deja vu.
Second.
Deja vu. I have a motion and a second to approve. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Like signs nay, and ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Lane. All right. PC 2023-14. This does involve a public hearing, but I think staff has a little discussion with us for our comprehensive plan, and welcome that. Chair recognizes staff.
I think it's really Mr. Dudley that needs to be up here. He's the one that led the charge over these last three years.
It's good to see you here, that's for sure.
He's kind of handed the ton off to me at the end, but this is the public hearing portion for our comprehensive plan. We provided the draft plan to you all probably about two, about two months ago, I would say. The, we made it public on our website as well at the same time. Again, this has been about a three-year process, working with our consultant, Gary Mitchell with Kendrick Keese. We've held multiple public meetings. Gary will get into more of the details, but he's going to, we have our consultant here, Gary Mitchell with Kendrick Keese. He is going to provide a quick run-through of the comprehensive plan, and then, from this point forward, we'll, after the, of course, the discussion, make a recommendation to city council. So, now, this, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Mr. Mitchell, welcome. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. I know I'm standing between you and dinner, all the folks here to comment.
All those in favor, adjourn? No, okay.
Well, I told staff beforehand that when we do public hearings like this on a comprehensive plan, if the room is crowded, something's up.
Yeah.
If there's nobody here, usually, things have fallen into place pretty well, and I think council seems comfortable. We'll see next month, but appreciate the opportunity tonight. For some of you who saw a presentation like this last month, this is the abbreviated version, just to give you another overview of the plan. But I just want to give credit to the rest of our team once again. We had CDM Smith Engineering Transportation Firm with us, and then APD out of Atlanta, for those that know Jesse and Bridget Wiles and their team. They did the neighborhood revitalization studies and work almost 10 years ago now, and so, they contributed to the conference plan update as well. These plans focus on more of the city's physical development, all these topics, infrastructure, land use, housing, transportation, economic development, recreation amenities. Things like education, social services come in in certain aspects, things like economic development, but it's mostly about physical development of the city. And these are some of the ways that cities typically use these plans. At the end of the day, it does become more of a reference document for staff, just as tonight, when you are considering decisions, this is a guidance document. The future land use map contributes to your zoning discussions. And this, as Clint said, this project and effort definitely was affected by COVID. We had a public meeting on February 20th of 2020, and a couple of weeks later, the world turned upside down. So, we did a lot of online, hybrid, as they like to say, public input. We had some great Zoom sessions. We probably had better attendance through that type of interaction than holding formal meetings. We did have almost a 30-member advisory committee that we did meet with during the COVID period four times as the plan came together. four times as the plan came together. So, um, I'm really comfortable with it. There was good input to this plan, and as I say, seem to be in a good place here as it comes forward for decision. Uh, along with the, the work that APD did, which is some of the images here, some of the mapping work and data work that they did, we pulled together a lot of information about where Florence is today. That information is at the back of the plan document as supporting information. Uh, but then, one of the important points there was to look at, uh, what the potential population outlook is in the 2020 census. Florence was just under the 40,000 mark in population. Um, at the state level, when they do projections, they actually have Florence County losing population in the years ahead. We didn't believe that was the case for the city. Um, you know, a lot of rural areas can, can lose population over time, but, uh, so we have, through a, a mix of methods, looking at what that picture might be over the next 20 years, we have Florence potentially growing to almost 47,000 by 2040. That's based on today's city limits, and as you see, even on a small lot tonight, boundaries can change over time, but if annexation activity happened more extensively, that would certainly need to factor in. But any projections like this, you need to monitor year by year and see what's actually happening with housing destruction and economic development. Uh, some great economic development wins here the last couple of years. But these are some of the themes that rose to the top at the end of the day. Um, from the economic side of things, once again, to neighborhoods and emphasis on quality and amenities, all the great things that have happened downtown since the last comprehensive plan 10 years ago. That next big thing, there's a couple of things in the plan. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about desire for an aquatics facility, a water recreation facility. There's the idea of an entertainment district in Florence beyond downtown, maybe associated with, uh, I saw it myself just over the weekend or, or the last couple of nights, um, uh, sports tournaments. You know, people that are obviously here from out of town, groups of kids that are here for sports. So just giving them and your own residents, uh, additional things to do through an entertainment area. Based on all that early input, um, some key words, uh, stand out in the plan. We call them guiding principles, but, uh, no matter what actions the city ends up taking based on this plan, uh, there's key words like being ambitious in the next couple of decades, being collaborative. You have a lot of partners, uh, other levels of government, public, private, nonprofits, the foundations in the Florence area, being a connected community, both in terms of roads and trails, but also just events, things that bring people together. Um, there's an equity theme throughout this plan. It shows up in every section of this plan. And a couple of others, uh, being an inviting place, which certainly feeds into economic development, inviting for investment, which is happening. But then, as for newcomers and, uh, for, uh, visitors, um, being a resourceful city, uh, that is something that this city government does well, working with the resources it has, and then being transparent, of course, on the government side as you, uh, work through putting a plan like this into action. Then each of the sections of the plan has a series of goals, um, some things to work toward, and then there's actions, uh, to take to get toward those goals. Um, at the end of the day, each of the sections has these common elements which you try to tie back to previous plans and the results of those. We call out accomplishments in each of the planned sections, things that have happened the last 10 years. Uh, there's 27 goals in this plan. When you add them up across the different sections, there's, uh, almost 175 action items. And they're grouped into these categories, whether they're more capital projects, construction-type projects, programs, things that your city departments do, or special initiatives. There's zoning, other types of city codes and standards. Uh, there's partnerships and communication with your other, uh, entities that I mentioned, whether they're public sector or others, that, to work together. This plan ultimately is adopted by the city, but it's really meant to be a community plan for your various partners to work with the city and the community on. And then there's things that are called out that are next level of study, things like the drainage master plan that's already happening. Um, so a next level after we've looked at this kind of high-level, C-wide view. One thing that we added since even we talked with some of you last month was, uh, the, the, uh, Main Street Award, uh, was formally awarded up in Boston, and so we added that to the accomplishments in the economic development section. And there's the images at the top of the slide. That's actually a fold-out page that's two-sided. While we were updating the comprehensive plan, we also updated the city's downtown master plan. Same idea, called out a lot of the great accomplishments of the last 10 years, and now staff was really looking for that next kind of five-year agenda, next things to work on. But there's this nice fold-out in the downtown plan that kind of recaps the things that have happened the last 20 years, some of the before and after images. So we've, uh, we've tucked that into the comprehensive plan as well. So it's, uh, it's a nice overview of all that's happened downtown. And then, as you look across the different sections of the plan, I mentioned those 175 actions, there's, the most actions are in the housing and neighborhood section. There's a real emphasis on, um, neighborhood protection on the zoning side. As you discussed tonight, there's a neighborhood conservation zoning district, but you have your zoning, uh, but certainly all the revitalization effort that's been happening the last 10 years. But, uh, actions spread across this plan. Then, when we get to the implementation section toward the back of the plan, of those 175, we pulled out 21 items that we thought were the most important to focus on, either as high priorities or things to start chipping away at that will take some time to get to over time. Uh, and you see the, kind of the timeframe for some of those. So some are fairly immediate this next year, some are spread over the next few years. And there's some of the key words. Um, and like I say, you go through a process like this, talk very big picture, you're talking about the entire city, but there's some of those key words, everything from transportation, neighborhoods, your key corridors, uh, corridors like Evans and, uh, Palmetto, all these key areas of the city that either frag out development or has, uh, kind of the entries to your neighborhoods, how important they are. So stormwater, all these key pieces of a city once again. So I think that action agenda is, is a, a great focus for the next five to 10 years. Uh, the future land use map is updated as well. You know, we were looking to a, a map that had been done 10 years ago, and this really syncs now with the city's unified development code. That code was a, a result of the last comprehensive plan. That was a major initiative of that plan, was to redo the city's development regulations, uh, coordinate them better. So this really syncs well now with the city zoning. And, uh, just wanted to call out, while we were doing this, uh, plan update, Florence County was updating its plan as well for the entire county. So we focused the city map just within the current city limits. The county was updating their map for the rest of the area. Um, but as I say, this reinforces the, uh, unified development ordinance. The, that pale yellow on the map, especially you see so much of that in the center of the city, is your older established neighborhoods. Those are the neighborhood conservation areas on the future land use map that correspond with the neighborhood conservation zoning districts. But this map, the, the reds, the purples are commercial industrial activities. So the map is highlighting the, those locations for additional investment. And the corridor mixed-use category is a new category. It's especially along the Evans Street corridor, kind of toward the top of the map and around downtown. Uh, but if you think about Evans, an area where there's still some older homes that front on Evans, it's not the same street it was many decades ago, but there's homes that have transitioned to office or business use. Uh, so it kind of recognizes unique areas of the city that tend to be spread along roadway corridors. And then certainly with the floodplains, the blue fingers across the city, and the park areas, uh, areas for, uh, long-term, uh, open space and recreation enjoyment. So a lot of things reflected on that map. Within the plan to go with the map, there's descriptions of each of those categories, so that, that supports, as you're looking at, uh, zoning cases and decisions, there's guidance in the plan for that. And once again, at the back of the plan, I said in our sessions last month, and I'm preaching to the choir here, because, um, not all cities keep these plans fresh and up to date. It is a state requirement in South Carolina. You need to look at these plans every five years, but we certainly say every year, you know, kind of step back, what have we accomplished? That's something that Florence has always done well. Celebrate your, your wins, your successes, and then, uh, five-year interim update, 10 years down the road, need to really take a, a good look at the, a plan like this again. So, um, so I will leave it there. This was a slide I mentioned last month, that, um, there's a lot of ideas, there's seeds planted in this plan, but, uh, nothing happens automatically if council adopts the plan next month and the next couple of months with the readings. Um, everything still goes through your typical processes, budget ordinances being adopted, contracts. So all these different ways that council still, uh, puts a plan like this into action. The plan is a guidance document, but hopefully captures where Florence was in 2021, 22, and looking ahead the next five, 10 years. So I will leave it there. Happy to answer any questions about the content or, uh, in general.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you. That was a, a great presentation. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, the two years that we basically lost for COVID, does that bump the five-year period out from there?
It does. It does. Um, yeah, from the time of adoption, the city will then be looking at a next five-year working period, and then, you know, looking at that next interim update.
Good. Commissioners, any questions? Great job, by the way.
Appreciate it. It's a team effort. Great staff, great, great leadership.
Excellent. All right. Um, do we vote on this?
I'm sorry?
Do we vote on this?
Yes.
If there are no questions, I'll call for a motion.
Immediately approved.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
May, some don't think so? Uh, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right, Mr. Moses, uh, excuse me, before, uh, is there any old news, new news that we need to?
Uh, a little bit of both. Um, yesterday's, uh, city council meeting, uh, city council held the Dexter Drive rezoning request, uh, at the previous month. So, uh, we're in April, that would have been in, in March. They, uh, the matter was deferred to this month, and then, uh, city council did make recommendation to send it, uh, back to planning commission for further review. Uh, and this would be to, uh, to discuss the impact of the increase of, in density essentially from, from the, the, what, what the developer could currently do with the property to what is, uh, what was recommended by planning commission. Uh, additionally, uh, council has requested that we hold a special meeting prior to the May meeting, uh, of city council, which is on May 8th, so that, uh, planning commission can, uh, go ahead and hear the matter, uh, and, and then, uh, make another decision regarding the rezoning, so that city council can then make a, a decision at their May 8th meeting.
Okay, so we-
They want us to have a meeting before their meeting? That's correct.
And we'll still have our regular meeting?
You would still, it would be, your regular meeting would be on May 9th.
May 9th.
You would have a special meeting, uh, just before the-
Why not just do a meeting May 8th and be done with it? Do it as they are?
If, if this is, uh, the commission's wish, we can certainly move forward.
But don't you have to let the public know so, so many days?
Uh, I need to speak with, uh, the, uh, city attorney to see what will be involved as far as, we've already held a public hearing back in January at this point, uh, for the rezoning. Uh, then February, uh, it got, it was deferred after the January and, and public hearing, uh, to February's meeting with planning commission. Planning commission made recommendation to city council, uh, that was then heard in March. City council deferred the matter to this previous month, and now they have made the decision to, to send it back to planning commission for, uh, for further review.
Yeah.
So we have, we're working with the, the owner to, uh, work with his engineer to, uh, put together some information regarding what that impact would be. Uh, major concerns being infrastructure in that area. Um, but we'll, we will bring that before planning commission, uh, at the, at the May 9th.
Okay, now, where's the good news?
There is no good news. The, uh-
Very true.
What, what did it go, what did it go to the city council? How many lots did it come up? So the-
It went up, I think it went from seven.
Four to-
Four to seven, right?
Four to-
Six?
Six, I believe.
Okay.
Seven to seven.
So that was- That is what, what staff has, uh, provided information regarding that is, this, this property is large enough that it, it will require, uh, some form of stormwater control. Uh, and how that impacts the number of lots the developer could, uh, develop is, is yet to be seen. All of the, any stormwater, uh, uh, development regulations, uh, any of the, the engineering work, uh, that will go on after and be reviewed by city staff. What, what I anticipate the developer providing is a statement and a general concept on, on how they will address some of these concerns.
The thing that frustrates me a little bit is I have to recuse myself, and, and consequently, I can't make comment. And I have a lot of comments. So I'll leave it at that, and we have some very, all of our commissioners are seasoned and very capable of, um, handling that scenario, but it's, it's a little frustrating from the city council perspective, send it back to us after we struggle with it. You know?
So I will, um, we will place that on the, the May's agenda. I'm, I'm not sure if council's action will require a public hearing. I'm a, shooting from the hip, I would say the, the matter has already had a public hearing held. Uh, the, um, and as, as our city attorney stated, uh, yesterday, a, a public hear, hearing will not be required, uh, additionally, as long as the intensity that is being requested or recommended by planning commission does not increase. Uh, so the applicant is not changing, uh, their request, uh, from planning commission's recommendation. Uh, so I would anticipate a public hearing would not be, uh, involved. The, the group that has been, uh, very interested in, in this whole, uh, development has continually stayed in contact, and we'll, we'll continue to let them know the process as well, so.
I have one more comment, please. If we, if, if we sent it to city council, and they want us to study how much impact it would have, staff can't make that decision? I mean, you guys know the, the rules and regulations are, if you need to put swells, if you need to put a pond, or whatever, whatever the engineers come up with, and, and they put their stand on it, why, why does that have to come back to us? I don't, I don't get that. I don't understand, or I don't understand. I mean, I, I, I think that's a little, now, that, that kind of, you know, that, that kind of steps on property rights. I, I'm a big, as you well know, I'm a big property rights guy, so we've already, we've already been, uh, city council may vote and say yea or nay, but, but if they're saying for us to look at the stormwater, how it's affected, to be quite frank with you, none of us are stormwater experts, all right? Those are for the engineers to, to look at everything. Uh, if you, if you, I mean, I, I just look down, Thamen going all the way to, you know, to third loop. I mean, I've, I've put in all them houses over there, all right? So, um, I mean, I used to stand chest deep where Gary Feen could put that whole belt. Let's, let's face it, you know? I mean, you have to get rid of that problem of the mill pond, which I used to hunt in. So, but why the, I don't, I don't, can you just elaborate a little bit more what they want us to do?
Uh, the, the motion that city council made was for the, uh, developer to, uh, recommended it back to planning commission for consideration, uh, regarding the impact of the increase in density. Uh, we will work with the developer to, uh, hopefully address that matter, and I, and I think that we can without putting too much burden on, uh, especially cost burden. I think, um, a lot of folks understand that.
The problem is they want to build too many houses in that, that area, and that's, that's what the whole deal is about.
Well, and deny?
Well, that's, that's the only spot that I know of that doesn't flood.
Send it back, guys.
That's the only spot I know, that whole, that whole area that doesn't flood. I wouldn't have part of it. I, I, I wasn't here, I just read what y'all guys did. But that's the only parcel of property that you can stand on. Uh, uh, even, I think there's pictures back at Matthew, and it's, it's dry, you know? Now, what it's gonna do downstream, that's, you're not gonna fix that no matter what you do.
That, that's right. The, uh, the information we, we certainly relayed is that, uh, with, with any development of this site, and he's just into the threshold of requiring this, but it will be required, is that any development that occurs on that property cannot impact, um, the, the issue that, that is currently occurring there. So that the, uh, they cannot increase the runoff, there's gonna be stormwater controls. All that will be addressed, uh, later on. If, if the-
If, if the, if the developer were, was to move forward as-is, without requesting rezoning, city staff would still have to acquire that based on the size of the property. So even with larger lots at four homes, we are still gonna require that the post-development runoff rate of stormwater does not exceed the pre-development.
All right.
So they weren't happy with our recommendation, so they sent it back to us to recommend again. Is that where we are?
The city, city council made recommendation to send it back to.
He's running for mayor next year. And the city council will meet on, on May the 8th?
They meet on May 8th, is there?
And when are they recommending that we meet?
They have asked if planning commission would hold a special meeting prior to.
Prior to the 8th.
The May 8th meeting.
Prior to, not the same day, no, not the 8th, but prior to the 8th.
But we still have the scheduled meeting on.
Right, on May 9th.
We're not gonna meet till now.
So when are you recommending that we meet?
Just combine those two. The volunteers here, were they heard of any, any requirements as far as notices got to give up before the next meeting?
Well, we've, we've got to determine, speaking with the city attorney, make sure that we do not have to give public notices out. We, we will not, I would say that we, it is not staff's recommendation to combine or change the May scheduled meeting just based upon all the other applicants that have to go for.
Okay. All right, any, for, I would request, if you would, someone would send, resend the minutes from that meeting to us so we could read through that again.
Yes, we will, we will update the staff report and, and provide all the additional information.
Because this has come up, we, we hashed this over more than once, and I'm not sure I was here for all the discussions.
And you'll give us the minutes of the city council as well?
Yes.
Okay.
You weren't here last night.
No, I wasn't here, yeah.
All right, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Mr. Moses.
We'll adjourn.
I am disappointed, Mr. Moses.
Well, no, I was thinking, I was thinking about that, you know, they want to, want to meet like that, and, you know, it's, you gotta realize, we got other things to do also.
Yeah.
You know, it's not the man you meet, you know, he might have a pool at your next regular meet.
I understand.
You can't care of business.
All those in favor say aye.
I can see why we can't meet through all that at one time. That's my recommendation.
And Mr. Moore's gonna see if we can do that.
First he got to see from the attorney, can we do it?
Yeah, that's what he's gonna check.
We might can't do it, you know?
Mr. Mitchell, may have.
Thank you again.
But we can have.